And here we go. Tap, tap. Okay. So we'll call the September 23rd, 2020 Planning Commission, Uba City Planning Commission to Order. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the commission after distribution of the Agenda Packet are available for public inspection. By the way, do we have anyone online that's listening other than ourselves?
No, everybody is a staff member or you just have one person that's... Yeah.
We did have, we did have one of the AT&amp;T log on for a little bit. He might log back in.
Apology. Yes, I am on for AT&amp;T. Thank you.
Oh, great. Okay. Um, so anyway, if we could have a roll call?
Commissioner Shannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Ali?
Here.
Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Dosher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Chairperson Eiler?
Here. And I believe that Commissioner Adams was an excused absence. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If we could do the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Ali, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic. And to the nation. One nation under God. Indisent.
Independent.
With liberty and justice for all.
Always a fun way to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, somewhere in here, I know it says I'm supposed to read this virtual information, so I'm gonna read a shortened version of it. The governor's declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of COVID-19. The governor also issued executive order, an executive order which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. Executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. So there's a lot more to that, but that is the short version and we'll go from that into public comment on items not on the agenda. And I don't believe we have anyone online, but I'll just go ahead and go through this. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Is there anyone here to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move to the next item on our agenda, which is Agenda Modifications or Approval of the Agenda. Do we have any modifications? Okay, hearing none. We'll keep moving through that. Approval of Minutes. Minutes from the August 26th, 2020 meeting. Any corrections, comments? Or motions?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that. Okay.
Okay.
But I did have a comment.
First by, who was the first?
Michelle.
Wait, what was it, Daria?
And I have a second, Daria Ali. And my comment was that everything looks correct, but we're missing any input from the commissioners in these minutes. And I think they're better minutes when there are some inputs from the commissioner. I agree.
Okay, this has been, I guess noted and I'll review through that and follow up, I guess, with the planning commission. I know that there was direction in the past due to some kind of reissue of the sound and how it came through and just being long and wordy. We went to an action minutes and so I guess what the commission's looking for is some sort of balance with maybe the comments from the commissioners, but maybe not the full, not just straight action minutes, but maybe not the full, some sort of summary of what the commission has said.
Exactly. It doesn't have to be a full, because it does go on, did go on for a couple of hours. That would be really wordy, but the feedback, the key points as being transcribed would be better in, especially in the moment if someone were to go back and review them and it will help us also to remember why we made the decisions we did. And who said what? And who said what? Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna state this since we have a first and a second, that I would definitely support that. I don't know if there's others that would support that as well?
I would, yes, absolutely. Commissioner Schaefer?
Me as well, Dosher.
Okay. So then we'll hold it for a future? Yeah. I guess I'm just thinking out loud is I'll work towards that and recognize we do, we do save the recordings, so they are, and the videos, so they are on file with the minutes. And so that's where we're trying to transpose it to paper where we also have the video and the audio now saved. Like this go-to meeting is saved forever, I guess, until we dispose of it for reference. But I'll work with Dale and I definitely hear what the commissioner is saying that we'll try to work on adding some content to it.
Okay, appreciate it. So I think what we're saying is we'll save this for later, for a vote at the next meeting?
No, I mean, I don't know if it's a vote, but what I'm hearing is direction that you want to see some content on the minutes. This, these minutes are approved or waiting to be voted to be approved and then I'll work on adding content for the future, if that's acceptable.
Okay, we do have a first and a second. What's the pleasure of the commission? Any more discussion?
Is that okay with you, Michelle, or I'm okay with that?
I'm okay with that, absolutely.
All right. So then that's...
Okay, then we'll go ahead and take a vote. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Approved.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Commissioner Dosher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Aye.
Chairperson Eiler?
Yes. Okay. With respect to that, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider use permit 1903 to allow for the construction of an 82-foot tall monopine wireless telecommunications facility located at 890 Von Gildern Way. And I believe that staff has a report for us, Planning Director Moody?
So tonight, actually, our new Assistant Planner, Jess Pre, will be presenting the items.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a recommendation for use permit 1903, the AT&amp;T Wireless Telecommunication Facility. So AT&amp;T is proposing an 82-foot monopine design for this location to be disguised as a faux pine tree, including branches to help conceal the pole and antenna. The facility would provide high-speed internet access 24 hours a day and 7 days a week. And use permit 1903 will allow construction of a new wireless telecommunications facility that exceeds the standard zoning height limitations of 80 feet. So that is why we are coming to the Planning Commission today, because coming in at 82 feet, it does require approval from the Planning Commission. The project location, so the property is located at 890 Von Gildern Way. The .42 acre site is currently developed with an approximately 4,600 square foot industrial building used for making cabin trees. And then here we have a site plan of where they are planning to install the monopines right here. And we have our general plan land use map. As you can see, it's manufacturing, processing, and warehousing. And there is some business and technology light industry right here in this purple. And we also have an office and office park nearby with some community commercial write-off and to the west. Zoning map, so again, here you can see most of it is zoned M2. So this zoning classification provides areas of full range of industrial uses. This district is consistent with the general plan land use designation. And I'm so here is just a recap of our zoning nearby. So again, to the north, east, and south, we have it's zoned as manufacturing, processing, and warehousing with industrial existing land use. And to the west, we have business, technology, and light, which is currently being... So originally, when this project came in, it was a proposed standard 100-foot pole. Staff did work with the applicant to reduce height to 82 feet and change the design from a mono pole to a monopine to reduce the visual impact in accordance with the zoning code. So they provided us with some photo simulations. In one second while I pull that up. So here you can see, this is a view looking northwest from Calista Avenue Bridge at the county line. This is, the top will be what is currently there and then the bottom part of your screen is going to be the proposed 82-foot monopine. And so here, we can see that here. This is looking northwest from eastbound Highway 20, right before the bridge. So really, you can't see it at all, so that wouldn't make much of a visual impact. And now this is looking north from eastbound Highway 20 before the bridge. So you can see at the bottom, it blends in very well with the monopine design. And once again, we have northeast from eastbound Highway 20 and before the bridge. So right here is where they're showing the monopine. This is now looking east, northeast from eastbound Highway 20 before the bridge. And so again, the top is existing and then here you would see the proposed monopine. And here is from Sutter Street at Lamon Way. So again, the top is your existing view and then this would be the proposed with the monopine. And looking south along Von Gildern Way from your existing and the proposed. So we think that they've done a very good job at trying to reduce the visual impact versus the 100-foot, the 104-foot monopole that was originally proposed. So some staff comments. Just as previously mentioned, a monopine is a monopole disguised as a faux pine tree, including branches to help conceal the pole and antennas. The pole design will address potential aesthetic impacts on the area. So the pole would be 82 feet tall with the antenna panels mounted between heights of 66 and 74 feet with one microwave dish located at approximately 60 feet. And the faux pine tree design would utilize green faux branches and a brown trunk and branch color. To ensure proper clearance above the top of the antenna, the faux tree would extend an additional eight feet to a total height of 82 feet. And so here on this diagram, you can see where the proposed antennas are along with the microwave dish. So it's right up here and then you see the branches are really making it look like a tree. The ground equipment area, so the 30 by 30-foot equipment area will be located at the base of the monopine. And it'll be enclosed by a six-foot tall chain link fence with privacy slats equipped with locking access gate. And equipment in this area will include a backup generator, 190-gallon diesel storage tank, a walk-in equipment cabinet structure, and a service meter. For the radio frequency electromagnetic energy exposure, so to determine radio frequency electromagnetic exposure, AT&amp;T did contract with the EDI consulting. So they conducted a theoretical modeling to estimate the worst-case power density from the proposed antennas. And it turns out, based on the worst-case predictive modeling, that there are no modeled exposures on any accessible rooftop or ground walking working surface related to AT&amp;T's proposed antennas that would exceed the FCC's occupational and/or general public exposure limits at this site. For the environmental determination, the proposed project has been examined with respect to its consistency with the goals and policies of the general plan and zoning code, its compatibility with surrounding uses, and the scope of improvement. Based on the whole record, we found that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment and that the mitigated negative declaration reflects city staff's independent judgment and analysis. Use permit findings, so there are, according to our code, six findings that have to be made in order to approve a use permit, and I'll go over the six findings next. So number one, the proposal is consistent with the general plan. So the general plan land use designation for this property allows the proposed use, the site has historically been developed with industrial uses, so we do meet the findings for that. Number two, the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate that used public access parking and loading. So the .42 acre site is adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Number three, the streets serving the site are adequate to carry the quantity of traffic generated by the proposed use. The project is a telecommunications facility, and so traffic trips to the facility will be infrequent and will be for maintenance purposes only. Number four, the site design, design of the building and scale of the project will complement neighboring facilities. So given the project's location is in an industrial district on an existing developed parcel, the design of the pole and the small size of the base facility, approximately 900 square feet, the project will integrate into the existing industrial vicinity. For number five, the establishment or operation of the use or building applied will not be detrimental to health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare. And so we've determined that the project will not be detrimental to health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare. And for the last one, so at least one of the findings in Title VI, Chapter IX, Article VI of the code is satisfied. And we've determined that A is satisfied, so the facilities of the state plan of flood control or other flood management facilities protect the property to the urban level of flood protection in urban and urbanizing areas, or the National Federal Emergency Management Area Standard of Flood Protection. So tonight, we are recommending that we conduct a public hearing to make the necessary findings to adopt Resolution BC 2013, approving use permit 1903, and environmental assessment 1914 to allow the construction of a new wireless telecommunications facility exceeding the standard zoning height limitations at 890 Von Gildern Way. Uba City is subject to making the necessary findings and with the conditions of approval. Happy to answer any questions. And as mentioned earlier, Keith, he is online as well.
Okay, actually, if the planning commissioners don't mind, maybe we can hear from the applicant as well and then we can have questions. If that's all right?
Yes.
Does the applicant have anything to add to the, to the report?
Sure. My name is Kevin Gallagher. I am here from Complete Wireless Consulting on behalf of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which does business as AT&amp;T Mobility. I will try to keep this pretty brief as I think staff have already provided a pretty thorough explanation of what the project is all about. We have purposely kind of looked for a way of solving a couple different issues with coverage in the city of Uba City. One is coverage itself, which is kind of the geographic area that is covered by the network. And then the other is capacity. You can have great coverage of an area, but if there are too many people and there's not enough antennas, not enough capacity, you will have dropped calls. You will have slow data speeds and things won't get through. So now with more than ever, people are kind of relying on information technology and using their devices. There's a real need. And we have placed the facility so that it will solve that need. We've worked with staff, as was stated, to come up with a design that is sensitive to the location and fills the existing coverage gap in the least intrusive means possible. We focused on industrial areas. Here we were very lucky and then Uba City has some pretty sheltered industrial areas in that area, north of Highway 20, north of town, that were nonetheless able to cover nearby residential and commercial areas, which again, without being intrusive. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has just about how this location was chosen, what the need is, or really any questions you have on the project. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we'll do, go ahead and see if the commission has any questions at this point. And I'm just kind of going across the screen here. Commissioner Shannon, do you have any questions for either staff or the applicant?
I do. I somehow went into this thinking that this was like a cell tower. Now, is it a cell tower, is it internet, or is it both?
It's both. It provides data, but it's mainly through cell coverage. A lot of people will get internet access just through their phone or other devices, hotspots, that sort of thing. So there's data and there's phone both.
Okay, and will this share with other providers?
At present...
Go ahead.
So yeah, at present, we are just proposing AT&amp;T equipment, but other providers would be able to co-locate on the tower. I believe the city's policies strongly encourage that. So you would also be able to encourage other providers to use this facility or show why they would not be able to use this facility. So yeah, this would be 100% available for co-location for other carriers.
Okay, then would, at least for AT&amp;T customers, would this help alleviate the gaps in the Sutter area, or is that still too far away?
You mean the town of Sutter?
Yes.
That would probably be too, yeah, that would be, there's actually, the coverage maps are included in the staff report. They kind of show kind of the bounds of what this provides. This would be sort of the east side of Uba City, north, and also then kind of south of Highway 20 and then kind of along Sutter Street. And then also over the river a bit into Marysville. So kind of that general area, but not so far out as Sutter.
Okay, and last question. On the faux part, the branches and such. One, how, what is the life expectancy of the branches, that they stay green and look fine? And two, who does and how often will the maintenance be done on that?
As far as the life expectancy of the branches, off the top of my head, I could not give you a firm figure. AT&amp;T will be responsible for maintaining them. So if the commission is concerned on that regard, you could also have a condition of approval that would require upkeep at a level as part of kind of the ongoing conditions of the permit. We can also provide samples of the materials to be used, but to staff to review. That is something that Ben Moody and I also discussed. And I can also get you a more specific answer to that question if you would like it as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, they are designed to last for a number of years, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna give a number I don't know.
Okay, Commissioner Blake?
No, not necessarily until Yana just asked that question. So my question to the commissioners are if we were to put it in a condition of approval, or perhaps this is toward Ben, and it wasn't too satisfactory, then what? Do we rip the tower down? I mean, so could you explain what could happen if we were to implement such a condition? I guess that's for Ben.
Yeah, I mean, it gets a little complicated. I mean, definitely, the wording in the condition of approval would help memorialize it. That says that if it's, it needs to be maintained at the discretion of the city. So then 20 years from now, it's starting to look rough, we get sent a letter and say, hey, per your use permit, it needs to be maintained, or you might jeopardize the validity of your use permit. But, you know, then it gets into a little bit, well, it's already built in there. How do you, even if you took the use permit away, what do you do? But there is subject to administrative actions if we did revoke the use permit, and there's a process for that. And so it would help memorialize it, but, and it does give us a little bit of grounds when we, if it led into that problem in the future.
Thank you.
Typically, what happens now, you know, a lot of these poles are built across the town and they haven't had the camouflaging put up place. And so what we see is 10 years, every 10 years or every five years, there's some sort of maintenance or some sort of change. And a lot of times we'll ask for it at that time. Like right now, we're seeing a lot of generators being added to the facility. So if we see something like, hey, the fence needs to be fixed or screened better, or T-Mobile is adding, is adding new additional stuff, we'll tell them, hey, you need to go in there and clean them up and let it be better than it is. And so that's another opportunity that the city uses is when they go in to change the equipment. That seems to happen pretty regularly. Kevin could probably add to it, but it seems like every five to 10 years, we're messing with different equipment on the poles.
Yeah, that's true. It is, it's fairly frequent. Every five years or so, sounds about right, where they will, it's a constantly changing technology. So they will swap out antennas, swap out radios, swap out equipment. So you can also, that would be another opportunity to say for that kind of administrative approval that necessary upkeep needs to be done as well.
Thank you both. And thank you, Commissioner Shannon, for that thought. I like that. That's all for me.
And while we're on that subject, I'm just gonna say that I concur. I hadn't thought of the maintenance aspect of it. But I've definitely seen poles that are out there that are very faded and haven't been painted in probably 20 years or more and they, it definitely doesn't look good. And I know we hardly ever look up, but just looking at it from the ground area, sometimes it'll get a little rough. Commissioner Dosher, do you have anything, any questions?
No, I would concur with your concerns and the commissioner's concerns about the upkeep on the pole, but no specific questions at this point for staff or for the applicant.
Okay, Commissioner Ali?
I guess, Mike, I have comments, so those might come in a little bit later. But the only question that I have is, you know, in photo two and three where they show the existing and proposed, and they show those basically dead and dying scrub brush along 20 there that are on both sides. What's the city's plan with that? That is dead and dying stuff. That is nothing beautiful. And yeah, just looking at that as the gateway to our community. And as you come across the bridge on the first photo, you notice that you're not, you're losing your view of the buttes with a great big cell tower there. And I realize that that's not what the planning commission is looking at. And I realize that that's not what the planning commission is looking at today, but I just, you know, I'm glad it's not 104 feet, and it's out of our purview. But what is the city's thoughts with that scrub brush? That was my question.
Not to pass the buck, but my, it's in the Caltrans right of way, so it's maintained by the state. And then the city has worked through a Highway 20 redevelopment strategy that was approved a couple of years ago to basically, as redevelopment occurs along Highway 20, to put in certain type of vegetation. So when Dutch Brothers, McDonald's happen, we're putting in the same type of plants and moving forward. And through that redevelopment plan, we did have a fancy, kind of a monument, almost kind of a gateway when you came in, a little bit farther down, kind of some sort of a draw to the eye, you know, that you come in. I'd be happy to share with the commission the plan. The kicker is, there's no money, there's no funding for it. And so right now, the maintenance is on Caltrans, what they planted. We do have a little bit of pressure when stuff starts to look really rough, we call them and ask for a little bit of love, but there's no current projects programmed or working on that deal with that landscape.
Good information, Ben.
Okay, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So the first one is, you know, what's permitted there under current zoning code is an 80-foot antenna, and you guys are proposing an 82. And I'm just curious, is that other two feet just that critical, that you needed to come before the planning commission to ask for approval? I mean, what's the intent of the additional two feet? Why couldn't this just be 80 feet?
You know, so I, to be blunt, Commissioner Schaefer, is that it's a tall tower, it's right when you come into the city, it's gateway to the city with the buttes in the background. And so I felt more comfortable bringing it before the commission and then also having an environmental document prepared. But yeah, you know, if it was 80 feet, or if I shortened the top of that tree a little bit, it could have been a zoning clearance, it could have been handled over the counter. But if somebody did challenge it for a problem, it might lead into an issue. And so that's why I thought the best way to proceed was to bring it to the commission.
Okay, so it wasn't a matter of just having the additional two feet for more carriers to hop on that tower if they want to down the road?
No, the additional height was strictly for the help with the design of the tree. They're handling, they're handling their coverage at the 74-foot level.
Okay, gotcha. And my other question, I'm just curious, because the radio frequency piece, and everybody's always concerned about phone lines and all that kind of stuff, and working and living near them, has anybody queried the surrounding property owners as to how they feel about having all that radio frequency buzzing over their roof lines and where they work?
The city has not. Kevin, I don't know if you could add any to with the study on it?
Were they notified?
Well, they're notified through this planning commission meeting. I mean, that is one benefit of doing it through this hearing, is that everybody within 300 to 500 feet was noticed of this, of this project. And then additionally, just to add, my understanding from talking with attorneys is, radio commission, with federal approval and FCC guidelines, you cannot deny a project, a monopole project due to radio frequency.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, all right, that's my next question. Thank you.
And, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, and I just wanted to say, with regards to the RF study, we have, the study that we provided is a, what they do is they make all of the worst-case scenario assumptions about how, how much output the tower will produce. So we'll be assuming that it is running all the time at 100% power, which means, you know, everyone is essentially calling, you know, all at once. And under those assumptions, with all the equipment operating at max power, it was at 5.3% of the FCC limit. So it is well, well, well below what the federal rules are for that as well.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Appreciate that. I'm done.
So I actually had a couple of questions. One was, that was a kind of an offshoot of Jana's question earlier, Commissioner Shannon. I believe, so when you guys add additional, and this is for the AT&amp;T rep, when you add additional antenna to a monopole, and one of my concerns is, this is a monopole versus a three or four-pronged, you know, very wide base tower that has a lot of support, and it's not, it's not really a concern, but it's a question. When you add, let's say another provider comes along and wants to put some more antenna on there, do you guys do a, I had asked a question earlier about, you know, what is the process there? And Ben wrote back that there was a building permit required for, you know, someone wants to add additional antenna to the pole. And on top of that, my question is, with respect to adding additional antenna, don't you have to do some kind of like an engineering or some type of report to make sure that when you put more antenna on that thing? Let's say you put a bunch of big antenna at the very top of it, worst case, right? And the wind blows and the whole tower comes falling over, and obviously that's not going to happen, but is there some type of report that you do that ensures that that doesn't happen?
In a word, yes. I will start, I guess, with the additional, the question with additional carriers putting antennas. The answer there is yes. AT&amp;T would hire a structural engineer to run a full report on the tower, all of the equipment that is currently on the tower, the weight of that equipment, the capacities of the tower, and they would determine whether the addition of all of their port, and that the other carrier would then provide a list of all their antennas, all of their radios, everything they wanted to put. And they would make a determination as to whether the tower would be able to hold that weight. If not, it would need to be reinforced, which would be a whole nother set of reports and work. That said, we typically engineer these towers when we build them to be able to hold the equipment of at least one additional carrier, so that it, in other words, you don't know exactly what they are going to put on, but you can ballpark it. So you can engineer it so that it will be more than strong enough for an additional carrier. Those reports are typically provided as part of the building permit, if the jurisdiction asks for it, which they almost always do, I don't know of any that don't. And as far as wind sail, we call it, that is something that is also taken into account with the structural, structural are actually divided between, there's two sections on them. One is can the tower, it's just the sort of, what we would immediately think of, can the tower hold the weight? The other would be, is just the force of the wind acting on the tower. They also calculate, in addition to the weight of all the equipment, they also calculate the surface area of all the equipment, and they calculate all the various wind strengths and the resistance of the tower. I'm not an engineer, so I can't really give you too much more information beyond that, but they do have a means of calculating it and ensuring that it meets all of those criteria.
Okay, so that brings my question around, kind of the circle here, is, so Ben, is that a requirement of the city for a building permit that, that that structural study be done as they add additional antenna? Let's say they, let's say that AT&amp;T said, you know what, one additional provider isn't enough, we're gonna put two more on there, or three more on there?
So yes, that's pretty typical. When it comes in, it will go through the building permit process, and typically they submit their structural counts with it that it can hold the new antenna.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the plan, if that's the case.
Definitely part of the building permit process to sign off, through the review.
Okay, and one additional question that I had was, you know, I look at these things sometimes and you gotta wonder, you know, if you put a pole, maybe a foot or two into the ground, and it's a monopole, and there's nothing really holding it up, what's to stop it from blowing over? There must be some type of base to these things. And so my question is, and I'm not asking for specifics, I understand you're not an engineer, but typically, I mean, we have a levee nearby, is it as deep as it is high? Or is it, or do you go for more of a super-thick foundation? Or what, what do you do? How do you make sure that the thing doesn't? The winds, I mean, down low, the winds aren't such a big deal, but when you're way up high on that tower and you have antenna up there and everything, I'm sure the wind factor is pretty great.
So as far as the base goes, I'll say the first step with all the engineering is a soils report, geotech report, to see what, what kind of soils there are, what the ground is like, and that will really determine how deep the foundation is. My understanding is softer soils means a deeper foundation. In terms of scale, though, it would not be anything close to the actual height of the tower. It would be much shallower than that. But beyond that, I, not being an engineer, I can't really give you a specific idea of how deep exactly it would be, only that it would be engineered to be able to withstand all of those forces that would meet and exceed all of the state, local, federal requirements for engineering. And I think Ben would actually know this better than me, as I do not really be able to probably see more structural reports and engineering reports than I do. But we could also provide a copy of the soils report, the geotech report, just for the, as part of the building permit process, just in order to verify that everything has been done properly and safely.
So if I could jump in on that, just to add to what Kevin said, it definitely depends on the loading, which is all called out in the California Building Code, and the height and the weight, and how much they want to hold up there, and then the soil. Typically, just a rule of thumb, Dale, it's usually about a third of the height, if you just ask, but it's all depends on how they do the footing. They can make it real flat and wide, or real skinny and deep, but rule of thumb, it's about a third, you know, for pole barns or whatever structure you see around here, if it's not a big flat footing, you'll see something, you know, like a traffic signal pole, if it's 20 feet tall, it's six feet in the ground, about six, seven feet in the ground. And so, yeah, once you stick that 40-foot chunk of concrete rebar in the ground, usually it stays there. And, you know, so if it does go away in 40 years from now, or 50 years, it usually stays. They usually chisel off the top with an excavator and they cover it with some dirt. If that's what we're getting to. And to add to, the new conditions of approval that were submitted to the commission, it adds number eight, that specifically calls for the geotech report and the foundation design to be routed to Levy District 1 and Sabuca for approval, just with it being relatively close to the levee prism, that they just wanted to, we bounced it off them, they felt real fine with it. I mean, they're digging a hole in the ground, but they're filling it with concrete. And so, but they wanted to make sure and have that double check. And so those new conditions of approval that were sent to you with that number eight, that is what we added on there. We could read that later on here when we get to the end of the action items.
Okay, and I, Ben, I appreciate that. I know you said that was coming, so I didn't remember hearing that, and maybe I just missed it, but if that's in there, then I'm good with that. And then the last question that I had was, I'm just gonna reiterate again, that I would like to circle back to Commissioner Shannon's and some other folks' concerns, not concerns, but we just want to make sure that, that the tower is going to be adequately maintained. So if there can be a condition added for that, I think I heard that from more than one of us, and I know it comes down to a vote in the end, so maybe the majority's okay with that, but I, as one, would definitely like to see that there be a, some type of maintenance condition put on this.
So Kevin, if you could hear me, would AT&amp;T be acceptable to an added condition? It'd be number nine, that reads something along the lines that maintenance is to be acceptable to the city's direction, discretion, and upon notice, AT&amp;T will work to improve?
Yeah, no, that is a reasonable ask. I do actually apologize, there's one thing I forgot about that I should have mentioned earlier regarding one of the conditions of approval. This is the one, at number five, I believe, that we discussed on just, AT&amp;T is a little bit concerned as to the wording of that condition, because the way it's phrased, it sort of sounds as if the design can be redone at staff's discretion after the planning approval. I know full well that staff does not intend to do that, that all of staff's directives will be consistent, you know, with whatever is decided by the planning commission, but lawyers' jobs are always to kind of look at the worst-case scenario of stuff with the way things are drafted. So if that language could just be clarified a bit, that is the intent, we would very much appreciate it.
And so Kevin brought this up with me, you know, after we had the conditions of approval out. Staff would be open, Kevin, if we add to the end of that condition, in substantial compliance with the approved project?
Yeah, that would be all, that would be all we'd be asking for, just that bit of clarity. Thank you.
So Commissioner Chairman Eiler, if, when we go through the recommendation, if we, just with our recommendations for approval, it would be to modify condition five as discussed and add condition number nine regarding the maintenance, we keep it that simple when we do the recommendation? And then Kevin, I want to make sure that you have the recently, we swapped out the conditions of approval to add the LD1 comment. I think we've emailed it to you late, so you had the wording, but we could read that comment out to you, if that helps.
Oh, yeah, sure. I would appreciate that. I have not actually seen that yet.
Jaspreet, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do. So condition number eight, we, if the project foundation is deeper than five feet, the applicant shall provide a geotech report and foundation design that is to be routed and approved by Sutter View Blood Control Agency and Levy District 1 prior to the issuance of the building.
Oh, yeah, no objections. That is perfectly fine and reasonable. Thank you.
All right, so Ben, I think you said you have some recommendations?
Could I make another, could I ask a question, Commissioner Eiler?
Sure.
Sorry, this came up in my mind. Has AT&amp;T purchased this property at 890 Von Geldern Way, or is it a lease agreement?
Oh, no, sorry.
Yeah, the rest of my question was, were there other locations in that area looked at?
First, AT&amp;T has entered into a 25-year lease with the owner of the property. And then also, yeah, a number of other locations were considered. Because of the geographic area that we're trying to cover, eastern and central of Uba City, there's a lot of very, there's a lot of very dense, single-family residential and commercial areas where you cannot really build, where you'd be right by residential areas. So in order to kind of find a place that could cover everything while still being acceptable to the priorities that Uba City has, most of the areas we looked at were within this, that little kind of industrial chunk that is bounded by the river, Highway 20, and Sutter Street. So we looked at several locations there. And then we also looked south of Highway 20 as well, but we were not able to find a suitable property. If you look down there, everything is, even the industrial properties, a lot of them are, well, one, a lot of the properties are smaller, and then two, a lot of them are just right up against residential properties where there's not really any screening. So people would, you know, see everything, see all of the equipment, all the ground equipment, the generators, right from their yards, which we try to avoid. So that's how we settled on this location.
And also, it'd probably be in the aviation flight line, if you went south very far. That was my only question. Commissioner Eiler, are you going to open? There is somebody else on, are you... Are you going to open this up to the public or is this time for comments?
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and open for public comment. Thank you for the reminder, Commissioner Ali. Do we have anyone on that would like to make any comments or have any questions regarding the project? Is there any, Ben, did you guys, do you have anybody on?
There are no questions that have been submitted so far through the online.
No questions?
Okay, and no?
You have our deputy?
Is there any?
You know, in case there's questions.
Yeah, there's somebody named John on also.
That's John Schaefer, potentially?
John Newswanger.
Oh, that's the property owner.
Okay.
Great. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public session then. And any further, well, staff, you said, Ben, I think, did you say that you have further recommendations or not? Or this, that's the end of the conclusion of your report?
So I would just, when commission is ready for a recommendation, should you desire to add the maintenance, I would I would recommend that we approve the updated conditions of approval related to number five, add the number eight, and then number nine regarding the maintenance.
Okay. All right. For any further, I know Commissioner Ali, you said you had some discussion item. And anybody else with discussion items or motion?
So I just feel like it's important to discuss that aspect. One, I'm an AT&amp;T customer and have been a loyal customer for many, many years. So I, nothing against AT&amp;T, but and and I recognize you've gone through a lot in vetting this. But I do think it's apparent that when you come across the bridge now, you're not going to see the buttes. What's going to jump out at you is a monopine tower. And anytime I travel on 65 going through Olivehurst, that's the thing that jumps out at me. Of course, that's Olivehurst, is that ugly, ugly monopine. I know they're an attempt at making it less intrusive, but I also don't see that screening as much of a resolution to it either. So I I just feel very sad that in what I consider the gateway of and that shouldn't be full of industrial stuff anyway, from that perspective. Although at the time it all started, nobody was looking at community development in the way that they are now. I just think that this is not the best addition. And even the fact that it's just a couple of feet over, so that it comes to the planning commission for a use permit, I think that we need to be looking at that really seriously. It's obviously going to happen regardless. And I'm just very sad to see something like that at the gateway to our community and between the bridge and the buttes, because that is often a stunning view at sunset. So anyway, that's just my comment.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Shannon?
I'd make a motion whenever we're there.
Okay. If you're prepared, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution approving use permit 1903 and environmental assessment 1904 to allow the construction of a new wireless communication facility exceeding the standard zoning heights at 891 Geldern Way. Uba City, subject to the necessary findings and with conditions of approval with the following modifications. The update to condition number five, the addition of condition number eight, and the addition of commission of condition number nine. Applicant owner is required to perform regular upkeep and maintenance of the total facility, including but not limited to the faux branches.
Okay. So we have a first. Does anybody care to make a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Doster with the second. Can, any further discussion? All right. Was somebody about to say something? Okay, hearing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Approve.
Commissioner Ali?
No.
Commissioner Doster?
Aye.
Chairperson, please?
Aye.
Chairperson, aye.
Yes. Okay. Congratulations, AT&amp;T. You have a tower.
You have a use permit.
Or a use permit for a tower, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to, one other comment, Chairperson Eiler. And that is?
Who is that? Commissioner Shannon, yes.
I'd like to thank Ben for the foresight to memorialize this action. That extra two feet is worth having this put into writing in a way that people were notified and so forth. I just, I admire that, because for two less feet, we would not have had to deal with this. So thank you, Ben.
Okay. So next item on our agenda is future agenda items. And kind of look toward our planning director for that. Ben?
So future agenda items, right now, we're a little bit of a lull. The last couple of applications have come in through gas stations that we've sent incomplete letters to. And so they're working on redesigning, updating the project descriptions and resubmiting. And so right now, we're proposing to cancel the next October 14 meeting. And most likely, I'm going to be gone the week of the 5th through the 9th. And so most likely, the 28th will be canceled also. But we do have behind the scenes the harder projects. There's there's some project changes with the harder development regarding three tentative maps, a map on the north residential, a map on the south residential, and then what they're calling a marketplace where they're where they're doing a general plan amendment, rezone, a specific plan amendment and to to change some of the commercial office to commercial and change the layout a little bit. And so that's pushing for maybe as early as November, kind of or early December meeting. So that's probably the next big item that's coming forward.
So do you think there won't be, there potentially won't be any meetings in November then?
There potentially won't be any meetings in October.
In October, oh, okay. So early November for that one, for harder?
Maybe it's, I would say late November.
Okay.
Yeah. You're right, Commissioner Dara, the, the, Ali, the, that's right. Most likely, I'll I'll put a schedule out, but the, we're thinking the November 2nd meeting is going to be canceled. And so that harder stuff that we're talking about, I think it's the December 9th or December 1st. It's the 9th is that first meeting in December, since we won't have the second meeting in November either. So that was a long discussion. No meetings in October, most likely, and the the one by Thanksgiving will not, will be canceled, most likely, too. But I'll I'll send out a schedule, so everybody's on the same page.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Okay. Any any other developments? Ben, I know one that keeps coming to mind is over by Rayleigh's, the the clothing store that essentially could go in there. Anything else happening, have you heard? Or things just kind of slowed down because of COVID?
Yeah, I think we're getting some COVID effect here. DD's actually sent us a letter basically saying their project's on hold due to cash flow. And they're hoping to move forward, but it looks like it's later, maybe until December or January timeframe. Basically, so the building permit's ready to be issued, but due to cash flow, they're they're holding up on actually paying for the permit and starting work. There is a project, it's more for entitlement and looking for funding, but Richland Housing is looking for 170-unit apartment complex in the backs, back of their housing. The village on off of Garden Highway and Percy, back in there, they have an area that they're wanting to get entitled, so they could apply for various grants. And so I know that they're they're rushing to kind of put a project design and get it entitled, so they meet some grant deadlines. So that will probably be another subject here that's going to come up before Christmas.
Ben, I don't know what that, what does that mean, entitled?
So entitled basically means it goes to the planning commission and you guys say it's okay to do it. But but then they but then they sit on it until they have money. And so they they've got the ten, they get everything approved. So as soon as they get funding, then they can move forward with it.
Okay.
Ben, where where's that located at?
So Richland Village, so if you if you go into the Housing Authority there, off of Garden Highway to the east.
Yeah.
So it's in the southeast corner of the Regional Housing Authority property there. So kind of north of Windship, southeast, they're up against the airport.
Is that the area? Farmworker Housing?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it affordable or is it going to be a market rate deal?
My understanding is affordable.
Yeah. I was going to say that location's up for market rate, because I know Ocho Pinch has been trying to do that one on Lincoln. And that was 178 units or something like that. He's struggling to get money to build that or to find a buyer to do it.
Yeah. I I, this will be, for those familiar with the New Haven project, where they came in multiple times for that for that corner development there, Garden Highway and Percy, where the plans got approved and then it it took a while to go through and find funding and grants. I I'll see that as a similar situation.
Yeah, interesting.
Ben, I'm just kind of curious, Amplus went vertical and then that three-story, what do you call it, the housing project also over there near Percy, Garden Highway, so right in that area? What what are those due to be completed?
You know, so what I've heard from the inspectors, for Ampla Health, they ran into some issues with ordering the steel or delays in the steel. So they can't get the structure up. So there's kind of scrambling around on hold, trying to get the steel in place. Ampla Hill or the New Haven project, I hear they're rocking and moving pretty good. I think they're on the second or third story. And now I haven't been by there personally, but just what I've heard. And then the temple here is also a big, big news that's keeping the inspectors busy. They they poured, my understanding is a massive basement across the street here just just recently, where I think it was yesterday, maybe where there's a huge temple.
Okay. Yeah, I was by that New Haven this weekend and the third story is definitely, they're they're on it, so. Anyway. Okay. Any other questions for the Development Services Director Report?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Ben. We approved a 30-plus unit apartment property right on Butte House Road or right before Butte House Road, near the the health food store there, the grocery store. Whatever happened with that one? They haven't done anything with that yet. I'm just curious. We proved it like in 18.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything for a while from Mr. Toiler.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last I heard, it's been a year or so, maybe two years, that they just couldn't get the pencil out. I haven't heard anything more about the property.
I mean, is that coming back around again for an extension? It's been two years?
You know, I'd have to follow up to find out where it's at, but I have not heard anybody request for an extension or not. But that's definitely something I could look into. I I haven't, I, all the contractors that were kind of involved with it and then the property owner, I I haven't heard anything about it, so. But I'll I'll follow up on that for for next item, as far as what what the timeline is.
Uh, one, one question I had, Ben, was I don't know if they submitted plans or not, but that Arco Station across from New Earth, did they submit a package or not?
No, so that was preliminary, where they kind of did a site out, they were trying to work out a purchase. A lot of the neighbors got real excited about it when we asked them to talk to the neighborhood. And so that, my understanding, they're they're no longer in negotiations for that spot and they're in negotiations for a piece in this harder marketplace.
So that group just moved moved down across from Walmart?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, one other question, Ben, I'm just curious. Oh, so go ahead.
Well, no, I just, to make sure, I probably said it multiple times, but we've received the 7-Eleven. Everything's gas stations lately, but there's the 7-Eleven application for Walton and Franklin that we've deemed incomplete. And then also for the Power Mart at Chevron at the corner, Western Parkway and 20, they're they're updating their project to remove the car wash element and to provide some noise and transportation studies. And then, gosh, the the other gas station, the other gas station on Clark, they've demoed it, but my understanding, the old one, but my understanding is they're not moving forward with that gas station.
Orion is not?
Yeah.
What's the status?
Not that location.
The Shasta Ridge Street, B Street Developments, Kentucky Fried Chicken and the hotel and all of that.
You know, I was trying to touch base before the meeting on that. We've issued the KFC permit, but I haven't got a start date out of them yet. So I'm hoping with them, with them actually getting obtained the permit that they start up pretty quick. So hopefully, I, we usually do a pre-construction meeting or when the billing inspectors meet out there, we'll get more of a timeline, so I'll share that as soon as I know it. As far as the across the street with the Federal Room, we're working through the hotel plans. And so I think our final comments have been, or for around two comments have been put in. And I, my understanding is I, where where the owner's at is just trying to figure out where, when to start. It didn't sound like he's backing out, but trying to figure out when to start the project with a little bit of the unknown with COVID. If he's going to wait till or start beforehand.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Oh, one quick comment for you, Ben, I don't know, I didn't know this, maybe everybody in this panel did, except for me. But I I work with the broker who deals with the stuff on, at the Walmart Center there. And I guess Pier One went out of business, they just closed their store. And just for your benefit, he told me he's got that leased already. So there is another retailer that will be going in there, and he couldn't share who it was. But he did let me know that it was leased.
That's definitely good news. And then I think the only, and I've probably talked about this in the past, is we're still working with them all. They're trying to work on some signage improvements and also get some leases going in there and also working through the COVID-19 restrictions, what they can do and what they can't do. But we were, are working on some some signage with the more, majority of it being handled at staff level for the rebranding of it, but there will be one pylon sign, kind of a digital sign they want to have out there at the corner of 99 and 20. No, no comment, Richard.
Okay. Anything, oh, I, something that came up was, I haven't been by Olive and Calusa Highway lately, but the, you said the Waffle, I can't remember which one it is, Waffle Shop, Waffle Barn, that's scheduled to be demoed, is that correct?
Yes. Jaspreet, have you heard anything about it? I I know they went and counted fixtures, they pulled the demo permit, but I I Darren's actually involved with that, with Hillverse. And so I got, I owe him a phone call to find out when that's going to happen.
Okay. I was just wondering if they submitted anything for replacement?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks, Ben, appreciate it, very thorough. Report of actions of the Sutter County Planning Commission? Commissioner Shannon?
As usual, I'm drawing a complete blank. I have to rely on...
I know you guys approved a subdivision, but that was too back, I think.
That's a long time ago.
We had the, there's a truck yard that was proposed and is in the process of being constructed at Lidle and Highway 20. They put in a left turn pocket there on Highway 20, but due to construction constraints as far as money and whatnot, they were allowed extra time in the timeframe of 18 months to 24 months to complete the pavement of the parking area for the trucks. So the planning commission at the county gave them that extension at Lidle and Highway 20, and there was also one ministerial item that came up as far as a modification to a zoning proposal that was just an additional option given to Doug Libby's staff that they could handle at that level, rather than coming to the planning commission.
Just out of curiosity, on that truck deal, is that on the north side or south side?
It's on the south side.
Oh, it is? Okay.
This was approved two years ago, and there was just one condition that was not met, and that was the paving, because they were, because of COVID, and you had a money, didn't have any business. Thank you, Richard. All I could get in my head was the Sanborn subdivision, and I couldn't get past that.
No problem.
It's a very, very clean truck yard, and it was, I was very impressed that they managed to do what they said they would do. So, you know, in two years, he's got two years to complete the paving, but he's got road based down, and it's very neat and clean, and, you know, a very, an asset to the community. It's in an appropriate place, unlike many of our truck yards, so it's a good deal.
All right. Okay. Any other questions, comments, before we adjourn? All right. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at, what is it, 7:15? I'll make one final comment, is a buddy of mine that I work with is the planning commissioner for the city of Benicia, he's the chair, and their last meeting last week went till 11 o'clock, so we're doing good. With that, we're adjourned.